Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for joining us this evening. Please be advised, in the event of a fire emergency and alarm will sound, please note all emergency exits and evacuate well away from the building. At this time, we request everyone, please turn off your cellphones or turn them to silence. Thank you for your cooperation. Mr. Malasani, do we have any additions, deletions, and changes to the agenda?
We do. Under additions, with respect to certification evaluations of lead evaluators, we'll be adding Tim McCardle, Assistant Middle School, High School Principal. And under personnel, an appointment of a high school science teacher. And under a revision of one of the motions that the board approved last meeting is revision of Director of People's Services with respect to the probationary appointment for Megan Rogers. It's a four-year probationary appointment, not a three-year probationary appointment. That's all.
Thank you. The consent agenda, can I have a motion for one through four, please? And a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Communications, correspondence, Mr. Malasani?
Yes, the administrative team put together a chain of command, a flow chart, that will be able to help parents, students, guardians, and community members. That will be making public here, it's in your board packet. It provides them who to contact first, second, third, and so forth, so that their needs can be met. That will be shared with the school community here after tonight's board meeting. Our summer programs are off and running at CalMum. Right now, our K-5 summer reading and math programs are entering their second week. Soaring Stars, which is a K-2 reading program for our senior students with respect to reading. Six-12 Summer School Program for our, excuse me, 7-12 for our summer school program for our students in middle and high school that's done at Batavia. And then we have some mini-course offerings that I shared between the backup notes. Summer camps are winding down. The sport season will begin here on August 22nd. We've had many professional development opportunities for our staff that we've offered this summer and the next couple of weeks. Next week, we will also have a new teacher, new employee orientation. Also, the middle school loop, excuse me, the high school loop and parking lots and the elementary loop will be sealed and re-marked next week as well. That's it for communications. Oh, one last thing is, I apologize. We also were approved by the New York State Education Department. Our high school approved their application for the Seal of Civic Readiness and Civics Pathway. Dr. Schnell filled out the application and we got the good news last week that our application's been approved.
And those are other paths to graduation, or different type of graduation? Thank you. Guests of the board, we have our school attorney, Mrs. Visengard, here this evening. She's been invited because of our board self-evaluation. It was noted that many of the board members wanted to evaluate our public forum and see if there's any ways we can do better to communicate with the public. So, thank you.
Good evening. Is this working okay?
I think so.
All right. Well, thanks for having me here tonight. It's good to see everyone. So, I've been asked to talk about best practices and considerations for today's tumultuous times in terms of public comment. So, some may be surprised that the public actually does not have a legal right to speak at board meetings. That's up to the board to decide. Most districts do allow the public to speak at board meetings with some parameters, which we'll talk about. So, although board meetings must be open to the public in accordance with the open meetings law, there's actually not a legal right for the public to participate in such meetings, again, unless the board decides. So, the Commissioner of Education does encourage school boards to allow citizens to speak on matters that are under consideration whenever it's possible to do so. There we go. Must the board permit non-residents to speak if it permits residents to speak? So, not according to the Commissioner of Education. The Commissioner believes that the purpose of public comment is for the board to understand the concerns of its residents, because those are the individuals that the board represents, the constituents. Now, the Committee on Open Government actually disagrees with that. The Committee on Open Government has opined that because open meetings provide the general public with the right to attend, not just residents, it permits members to speak. It has to do so whether or not the individuals are residents. So, because that's just an opinion by the Committee on Open Government, whereas the Commissioner's decision is actually binding. Unless and until a court decides otherwise, the board is permitted to limit public comment to residents only. So, we should make sure that our policy language is clear in that regard. If we only want residents to speak, we should make sure that our policies or our protocols or our sign-up addresses that in a specific. So, what's an alternative to a bright line residency rule? Again, this is just for consideration. There's not a specific requirement either way. But the board could, for example, limit public comment to district residents and parents or legal guardians of current students, as it's possible, of course, that parents or guardians live outside of the district, if there's a joint custody situation, for example. Employees of the district and individuals who own property within the district. So, some of our districts have decided to tailor the policy to allow these other sort of categories of individuals to speak as well. If the board allows public comment, may the board lawfully limit speaking time? Yes. So, you'll see that there's a Commissioner's decision on that very issue. The board may limit speakers to, for example, three minutes, as this board does. The board may require a group of individuals to identify one spokesperson, as this board does. And the board also does not need to permit those who sign up to speak to cede their time to another speaker. So, we've seen a lot of that, particularly around masking issues during COVID. So, one person would get up and then that person would say, "Oh, I'm ceding my time to this person." So, instead of three minutes, the person would have six minutes and so on and so forth. So, that's something that we do not need to allow and we should be clear about that in our written documents and orally at the meetings to the extent that we can. So, as I've indicated here, be as clear as possible in writing and orally in advance of public comment regarding such limitations, so that there's no question or confusion regarding what's allowed and what's not allowed. If the board, or may the board limit the number of speakers or the total length of public comment period? Yes, as to both. So, the board may determine, for example, that it will only allow three speakers per meeting?
Can you back that up?
I think you had one. Yep.
Dumpy. Yes, maybe that's easier. I just say next slide.
Yeah.
So, the board may determine, for example, that it will only allow three speakers per meeting and it may also limit the total time for public comment, for example, to 15 minutes. So, that way, if you have several people show up, it's first come, first served, so that the public comment period doesn't go on and on and on, particularly if you have a number of items on the agenda that evening. So, as I indicated on the last slide, make sure that you're as clear as possible in writing and orally in advance of the public comment regarding any such limitations. Next slide, please. So, if the board allows public comment, must it permit the public to speak on any topic? No. Board meetings are a limited public forum under the First Amendment. Boards can accordingly, may accordingly, limit discussion to topics that are on the agenda or other topics as long as they are reasonable and viewpoint-neutral. So, we know that we can't allow individuals, we can't limit, rather, public comment to support what we're doing and then tell individuals who don't support what we're doing that they can't speak. So, that's what it means to be viewpoint-neutral. Currently, the board allows individuals to speak on any school-related subjects in the rules, but then the sign-in sheet says any agenda item. So, we want to reconcile that. And it's okay to limit the items to, or the subjects, rather, to just agenda items. But we want to make sure that that's consistent and that we're clear upfront. And boards can preclude the public from speaking about confidential matters, such as particular students and staff, as well as non-district matters. And the board is clear upfront that we're not going to be speaking about particular matters as it pertains to personnel or students. So, that's good. Individuals who have specific concerns should follow the chain of command. So, it's great to hear that you have a formal document that can be shared, that people will know to whom to turn to share particular concerns and then that comes up the chain if not addressed. Next slide, please. May the board require speakers to sign up in advance and to identify the topic? Yes. So, this board does that and that's okay. Individuals may be required to sign up in advance and it may be limited to first come, first served basis. Next slide, please. Must the board respond to each speaker? No. So, explain how public comment will go, so that there's no expectation that the board will respond in person, which you do, other than, of course, saying thank you. And there may be some limited exceptions, although it's definitely the exception and not the rule, where, for example, you might point to a particular policy number that you know will answer the person's question, or if there's a flagrant inaccuracy, for example, where it's determined that there needs to be an immediate response. But generally, we just defer it to follow-up after and that's clear in the written materials. Next slide, please. May the board preclude individuals from speaking if they do not comply with the Code of Conduct? Yes. So, school boards must be sure that disagreements are expressed in a civil and constructive manner. Obscenity, defamation, and threats of violence are not protected by the First Amendment. Consider reminding the public, which you do, and that's good. In addition to the board policy, at the start of public comment, of the requirements and consequences for non-compliance. So, for example, obscene language, defamatory statements, and threats of violence are prohibited. Next slide, please. And don't be afraid to shut it down. We've seen a lot of that in recent times by boards. So, the president may issue a warning if the individual will not refrain from violating the Code of Conduct or board protocols or other policies for public comment. The president may direct the individual to stop talking or to leave the meeting. Again, we can't shut down the speaker simply because we disagree. It has to be a violation of the code or other written rule. Other actions could be planned, such as turning off the microphone. We could plan that in advance. So, if the person is not cooperating and won't cease and desist from what he or she is doing, we could just turn off the microphone in that instance. And if the disruption arises to a certain level, of course, we may need to adjourn and exit, as we've seen boards unfortunately have to do on many occasions recently. And then, of course, law enforcement may need to be called, depending on the circumstances, if it rises to that unfortunate level. Next slide, please. We must also be sure that we're practicing what we preach. So, there's been several Commissioner's decisions related to board member removal recently because of actions by board members where there's disruption to the operations of the board or the board meetings. So, I included here, by way of example, a recent decision from May of this year, where one of the, so the board removed one of its own members for official misconduct and one of the specific charges that was brought was based on a pattern and practice of attacking board colleagues and disrupting board meetings. Next slide, please. And you can see here some of the specifics. For example, the board member challenged the removal and the Commissioner dismissed the appeal and the Commissioner found that the district presented sufficient evidence to support the board member's removal based on his engagement in a pattern and practice of attacking board colleagues and disrupting board operations. The hearing officer had found that such behaviors interfered with and compromised the board's effectiveness and ability to function. So, the Commissioner is paying attention, not only to the actions of the board, but also to the actions of the community. And there's been some pretty aggressive cases by the Commissioner. And these last two bullets here, we found very noteworthy. The Commissioner stated that the former board member's conduct is emblematic of the incivility that has roiled school communities as of late and his colleagues, district staff, and the students and families deserve better. The Commissioner stated that amidst the struggles and difficulties of the pandemic, we cannot lose sight of the fact that our children are watching and learning from our behavior. For the sake of generations to come, we must look forward, reflect on our own actions and whether we are setting the example we want our children to follow. So, again, I thought that was pretty powerful language from council's office and from the Commissioner. So, it's incumbent upon each of us to make sure that we are, you know, keeping that compliance with our Code of Conduct. And so, if community members get up during public comment and they're not complying, shut it down. And if it rises to that certain level, leave the room, call the police, whatever we need to do to make sure that we are all acting as role models in each instance. Next slide, please. The board may alternatively and also establish a written protocol for comments. So, I see that the board's written protocols do just that. Currently, the board allows individuals to submit comments in writing to the district clerk by noon on the Wednesday prior to the scheduled board meeting and then these comments are given to the board in its next meeting packet. Next slide. What questions do you have? Sure. Oh, sure. So, in that particular decision, the board member called another board member a loser and a crybaby and threatened to take him out to the parking lot. In that one instance, yes.
So, when you reviewed our current policy, there's only the one discrepancy that you had, that you found?
So, the actual policy is pretty limited. The written protocols, I think, are very well done and that was the only discrepancy that should just be reconciled.
The sign-in sheet doesn't match. Okay.
Can I ask a question? So, Sarah, when you mentioned the sign-in, is it common for school districts to have the sign-in out before the board meeting? Or is that something where people, if they wanted to speak, would have to sign up on like on a Friday for a Tuesday? Do you see both?
I see both. I see both. There's no right or wrong way. It's whatever you're comfortable with. If that's working, no, there's no need to change it. But if you'd rather, you know, further limit and no, these in advance, you're welcome to do that as well.
If we're requiring that they only speak on agenda items, is that something then, you know, our clerk would say, "Next person signed up is so-and-so" and is speaking on something? Or should the board president say, "What agenda item are you here to speak on?"
I think that's a good general question to ask, because in, I highlighted here. So, if I'm just signing up this day and I hadn't read this longer sheet that says any, what's where is that?
Praise somebody or complain? Let me reword this. Of the public forums that I've been involved in in 29 years, it doesn't happen very often that someone's coming in to speak to something on the agenda. That, in my opinion, is the biggest hurdle that we're going to have. And that's, that's what I think we need to do the, that's why you're here.
So, that is a decision of the board. If it's manageable right now and it has gone beyond agenda items and maybe you make sure that all of the other best practices are in place and the language is consistent, maybe you do keep it broader than that and see how it goes. Or if there's been enough where it's been uncomfortable and we feel like we want to, you know, hone in on the specific agenda topics, that's entirely within the board's discretion.
Isn't there in our Code of Conduct or policy that you can write to the school to have something added to the agenda?
Yes. That's correct.
So, we could give a window between when the agenda's posted for them to ask to add a topic?
Well, typically, they have to have the ask before, I think it's like Wednesday, in which we create the agenda by Friday, in which we publish it. So, certainly that's a provision within the board policy.
How does that work then? The board decides if it should be added or not?
Yes, or at a later time, depending on the topic area.
And are you often forced to say no?
I don't think I've
I can't remember a request we made.
Yeah.
No, we've had, we've had a few requests in my, there've been a few requests. Not many, maybe two, to be added, can we be added to the agenda versus public forum?
Yeah.
And we've done
And I would say they were probably being asked to go into executive session because it was dealing with maybe a child's academic or behavior type of thing that I recall.
That was one of them, yeah.
That's one of them, okay.
So, if you are limiting it just to the agenda, then I guess maybe the downside of that is that if somebody does want to come in and praise someone, right, which happens occasionally, that would also be something that we couldn't allow. So, you really just have to do a cost-benefit analysis and figure out, based on current times and what you've seen, what makes the most sense. And then, you can always just kind of reassess periodically, especially since it's not in the board policy. So, you could change this easily without having to go through the formal policy process to change it.
If we do determine to make what may be considered a major change, what would your recommendation be on the timing of, not necessarily timing, but the process to inform the public of this change is coming? And, or is it something we can just change starting effective immediately?
You could, so is this up on your website, this document? Okay. So, this, the length of your document, that's there along with this sign-up sheet? So, they would see it?
They would pick that up and then would come in to speak.
Unless you public notice for a particular reason, you could just change it then. There's no specific notice.
If it's just that little thing, but I mean, if it was more major. I hate to even say this, but let's just go real major. Let's say that we decided we're going to exercise our right to not have public comment. That would be certainly a major shift. I'm not saying we are. I'm not saying that that's even really been but if it was something major like that, should we do it? What would your recommendation be?
So, I didn't break up the policy because it was so high level. I believe there is something at the policy level, though, that does briefly mention. So, we'd have to take a look at that, because if
So, our own policy might be telling us.
The policy specifically says public comment. So, then we'd have to go through the policy committee in that process. So, that would be a different scenario if you were going to eliminate it altogether as opposed to just changing the protocol.
So, it's essentially make sure we follow our own rules.
Right. But these you can change whenever and however you want, as long as the board is in agreement. And so, as long as you're replacing the sheet at the next meeting, there's no issue from a legal standpoint. Questions?
Yes, I will reiterate that. That is, I just needed an example of something major. That's not
Not intended, sure. Makes sense.
Yes. Okay.
All right. We'll have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And superintendent's report?
Well, I think we, public forum, there's none.
We have no public forum tonight. No one's signed up.
Okay. Next up is
Superintendent's report.
Yes, Dr. Schnell will be sharing with the board, the middle school and high school student performance report.
So, you all have had this data for a couple of days, so I will just spotlight the top priorities for you. As you know, we are always looking at the region's results as they relate to our students that have graduated from high school. We certainly also care very much about seeing our kids pass exams since they are, what we would say typically beneath what we teach every day. So, if we are teaching to a very high level, the regions' exams just kind of take care of themselves. What you're going to notice in this data, as Mr. Malasani pointed out in his backup notes, we definitely saw a decline in what we would expect to see in our passing rates. I would tell you that probably from the month of October, teachers were already beginning to speak this way. January regions were canceled, so we didn't get a double run this year of what it looked like for us to try to recalibrate our expectations inside the classroom to what the region's exams would expect. So, you're going to see that our kids, since the state of New York adjusted themselves, they basically said that due to COVID, we know that kids are going to need a break here. And they took their passing rates and tied down, basically. Definitely have students that need to be respected. So, similar to what we've done since the start of COVID here in Caledonia, the state of New York is acknowledging that all of us really need to look at our current grading practices and make sure that we're paying very close attention to how COVID has impacted learning loss, what that means for kids, and how we are pushing them in the classroom but not jeopardizing their future. So, it's like trying to meet in the middle. What do our kids need in order to get them back to what we would consistently say is our normal? So, when you're looking here, please know that in the month of June, with the faculties, we certainly spent time not necessarily paying very close attention to the region's data, because as you can imagine, when you look at this, it's beneath what your expectations are. If you think teachers did not feel that, they certainly did. So, we spent a great deal of time just talking about what do we do next? So, what does this next school year look like? So, certainly, when you think about the impact of COVID, kids not being in school in person, the learning loss that occurs from that, the teachers would tell you the biggest places that we see that is anything that was process-driven. So, we found it heavily in our mathematics. We also found it in anything having to do with writing, where writing was a very large component, because those things tend to be when we were online learning with kids, because they require such a high level of feedback and individualized attention from the teacher. Also, when kids return to school in that hybrid model, you know, we were still, we still had them in a distance. This is really our first run again at a solid set of region's exams now that our kids are kind of back up and running. So, you are seeing a little bit of learning losses there. I would also say that when you think about a final exam, final exams in their nature really mean that kids are going to have to take the learning from the beginning of the semester all the way to the end and actually really practice and set that information to long-term memory. So, some of the things that we've discussed as a team is our need moving forward to really think about data-driven instruction, when we know about kids, where are they struggling? I am currently, Mr. McCardle and I are working with the school library systems. You'll actually see Mr. Harris in the back of the room here again tonight, helping us with audio and video. The school library systems is currently designing a database for us. The database is actually going to run our home base section in the middle of our day. The middle school and high school master schedule are now completely aligned. We're aligned by FOWL schedules, so every student in grade six through 12 will now have that home base time for academic intervention, where we will be able to pull kids and really work on those more discrete skills. What we struggle with in this building is that we can't run, we can't run two separate systems. So, when we, when you log into school tool and you look at your children's schedule across the 612 building, we are an A-day, B-day schedule. Home base actually runs on sort of a five-day window. So, you might need to be with the math teacher on Monday, but with the science teacher on Tuesday, with the English teacher on Wednesday. The database is actually going to allow us to run a five-day schedule across that home base time, where we are going to be able to see what interventions kids are getting, how often they're being pulled. And an added component of that will be that the night before those interventions are delivered, parents will actually get emails letting them know that their child will be pulled for an intervention in whatever that content area is. So, trying to really increase the parent communication around what we know your kids need from us and what the data sets that we're collecting are telling us about learners is going to be a major push for us this next school year. We're really getting underneath and into some of the solutions around making sure kids know what they need to know in Unit 1 before we push on to Unit 2. So, you're going to see a solid focus on data-driven instruction this year with the tools to help teachers make sure that they can get that done. The other component that we know is important is really just helping kids get through tough things. So, that's the other setback, I think, we felt with COVID, is that learning is a process and it really does require that we stay very focused on hard things. And kids got out of the habit, in some ways, of kind of pushing through things that were challenging. I'm not saying the technology is not a good thing, but when you're sitting on the other side of a screen, you could become a passive learner. And I think now that we're back in a classroom, you'll notice when you walk in through the buildings that the teachers are starting to shut those Chromebooks a little bit more. a little bit more than what you would imagine, because we're trying to reengage kids in the kind of deep thinking and conversation that they need to have. So we do see the data that's in front of you as not as big a setback as it would have been had the state not dropped the passing rate from sixty-five to fifty, but certainly not, not what we here at Caledonia Mumford expect to see. So we're very solution oriented right now. Final exams here at CalMum are linked to a child's overall course average. And in the way that we have run this since the beginning of COVID, we've been trying to pulse with our kids, making sure that we are thinking about who they are and what they need in their future, not just what's happening to them in this moment. So because final exams did come in a little bit lower than anticipated, we did offer to families the ability to unlink the final exam from the course average, so that a struggle on one particular assessment right now, when we know most of the neighbors around us, well, I'm just gonna go as far as to say, most of the state of New York, is choosing to not use the region's exams as part of the kid's average. That's not a direction that we've been talking about yet here in Caledonia, but given that our kids struggled the way that they did on the exams, we knew that we needed to be gracious. So we did allow families to unlink. So just to give you an idea, there are about four hundred and eight families across the six through twelve, forty-five assessments were unlink from course averages. So even though these exams don't look how you would expect them to look, we still felt that we gave families the ability to weigh in on their children and their children's future plans, and we still only had forty-five exams actually get unlink. So just thinking about how the exam impacted the overall course average, for most of our kids, the impact was minimal. So what that really tells me is that your, your grade point average for the quarters was probably a seven, a second, a third, a final, and a region's exam came in at a seventy. Maybe you've been carrying a seventy in your average kind of all along, so families did unlink those. Where you might have seen discrepancy, where the course average might have been hovering somewhere close to ninety, and then the region's exam comes in at like seventy-two, those we started to see the unlocking happening. So trying to make sure that we are being smart as a school, taking care of our kids in their future, giving parents the ability to kind of weigh in on what this means for their kids, knowing that our kids are gonna be competing with kids all across the state of New York, and that their overall GPA is gonna matter. But at the same time, we want the local final exams and the regions exams to be still weighted here in terms of a priority, because we know that going into college and career readiness means that you're gonna have to be able to be a decent test taker. So you're gonna see us putting lots of structures in place to try to make sure that come next year, these numbers go significantly up. Questions?
Yeah, Dr. Chanel, the data we have before us, that's not all of the kids, correct?
It's not. I mean, you're, well, it is when you scroll down. So obviously, first semester block high school, so when you're looking at our region's exam results, you're gonna see just the kids that were in the spring course. So if I happened to take earth science in the fall, the region's exam got canceled, the local final. When you get into the spring, all of a sudden in June, the region's exams came back. So the kids that you're looking at here just happen to be slated in these classes in the spring. When you scroll down, you see our local finals and also middle level finals, which you, when you get into local finals and middle level finals, that's where you're gonna start to see across the whole, the passing rates for our final exams.
When did the kids come back to school last?
Uh, let's see. So this past school year, we were here all year. We started in February.
February, full-time. I think it was February.
We started in September. You're a year behind.
Thank you.
Well, it's all blended into one, and I, I feel the same way. So when you ask me, I'm also not as definitive. I feel like we just took two years of construction, and in two and a half years, they sort of melted into the script. What did the kids get? When did they get, for many of the kids, when you're looking at those regions exams?
Right, and how, how many, yeah, how many, we, they haven't had a region's exam in two and a half years, correct?
We gave regions exams last June.
Oh, really? Okay.
We did. We, only in four areas, so if you recall. So like, that's the thing about COVID, right? It was, we didn't have any exams. Then January came, we didn't have any. The last year in June, we got only four regions exams. And this year in January, they erased again, and then in June, we got a whole slate of them. It just, you don't, you just kind of had a really tough pattern of what that's gonna look like. When the regions, when the board regions has removed a region's exam, we put our local finals back.
All right, so in February, everybody was here. When did the, the state determine that fifty is the passing grade?
They did that somewhere around, I'm gonna say April or May.
After the kids had been back to school.
Yes, and kids definitely knew in the spring that the region's exams were gonna have that low cast of fifty. I mean, definitely, the lower is the level. I wouldn't say for all of our kids, but certainly teachers were, that it was being messaged on the news and kids were walking into their classes saying, oh, I got this, I only have to get fifty. Right, so like, we're, you're definitely feeling the, as we call it, organized chaos, because they, they are making decisions and giving them to us. But at the same time, it hasn't been consistent. So for us, this is a semester building. Literally, at the end of every semester for the last two and a half years, it's a measure of success and failure.
If you're an admissions counselor at a, say, the U of R, and Charlie got a ninety-nine on the chemistry regents and Kelly doesn't show up because she shouldn't take it, I mean, that, that's going to make a difference, isn't it?
Uh, when I bring admissions counselors into these serious spaces to talk about what admission means, I would say if you're gonna start talking about like the university, well, they are certainly, if, if kids are gonna want a viable schools, you are gonna need to have these courses under your belt with passing rates on those exams. They're gonna care about your overall GPA, and they're gonna care about whether or not you took the hardest courses offered. We offer such a vast slate of advanced placement courses, and obviously, the only way to get your AP credit is to take those big exams. Those, those exams and those courses are definitely something that you're gonna want harder to get into, or the more competitive colleges like the University of Rochester, University of Buffalo, Princeton, University of Nanology, you're gonna be looking for kids to have the, the transcripts successfully completed because we offer them.
You answered my question completely. Now I get it. Thank you.
So I know you take testing serious. My concern is, is the board is, we continue to look at this through the semesters, these kids have to compete against kids across the country. So New York can lower the standard, but like you're saying, if you're gonna go to a competitive college, you're competing against kids who took other tests or, or didn't lower their standard, or you're going in and take chemistry in college and you've got a fifty-two in New York, that was good enough, but now you're not gonna make it through your first semester and you're plunked out. So catching these kids up and getting them back. I had a few low regents myself, but getting them back up is a thing.
I also did. I mean, I've overcome that, but they are a measure, especially if you say, you know, I want, I want- I want to go to college, you want to be, you want to be a biology major when you get to college, which you did not do while in chemistry in high school. Your first semester of college, someone's gonna pull you aside and they're gonna say, hey, I don't think this is for you. And it's not gonna be because the child isn't passionate about that particular content, it's gonna be because their foundation has a little bit of a crack in it. So I would agree with you, the data is important for us to be looking at it. That is why you see teachers at the high school right now offering some of these mini sessions across the summer. We're pushing a little bit. I mean, our, our attendance isn't awesome. I would hope to see this be something that we can grow. But coming in and getting some mini courses in writing and being ready to take on some of the courses that you're gonna have in the upcoming school year is a great way for us to start working toward recovery. I also would like to see us across this school year get serious about peer tutoring. I think every teacher in this building would be able to say, here are four kids to take in my class and just not get out of the park every time. I would love to be able to have our library, mimic the college library, where kids would come in and say, you know, I have a, I have a physics test in two weeks, it's on this topic, I need a physics tutor. And have us be able to say, okay, here are three kids that can definitely tutor, let's connect you during home base, and have that library become a place where kids are actually, you know, walking in, knowing what they need and getting their need met, not just by teachers, but even during their home base time. So you're gonna see us looking at a lot of structural moves to try to make sure that we do just what you said, catch them up.
Yeah, no. Maybe it's worth talking about alumni association. Maybe getting some, uh, those classes we went to that are hitting college, they're struggling, that they have to change majors because I went terrible at math, or quite the tested, quite difficult, but I love you. They'd be interesting to see.
Yeah, I can tell you that right now, just in the, I'll just talk about the teaching profession. You meet teachers that are in the interview process right now, of their teachings, of student teaching environment, very different pool than what we're not just talking about in high school. Two and a half years' worth of, obviously, our focus is on high school.
I'd please, I'll open to, we get on.
Just, Dr. Chanel, I know you, you always look at regional data with respect to how our kids performed. Can you share with the board how our kids perform, you know, basically as a whole, and also with their mastery level?
Sure. So I would say that on average, just kind of looking at the region in general, we definitely held our own. I, I actually, it's not normal that we go four, five, six days out for region's exams. I was nervous too. I needed that regional perspective to really, to have a relationship to others. Our work that we did during COVID, I mean, the teachers here were teaching on a schedule, so that's very different than some of the things that we found us. And certainly, being able to share with the teachers that when we compare ourselves to our neighbors, our kids definitely perform better. We worked at a regional retreat last week and we actually had other teachers, and that is your data. Doesn't pull that off. So I think our teachers definitely deserve accolades in that. We had two areas where we definitely, I mean, I'll give a shout out right now to Mr. Ilkovic, he doesn't like to have attention around him, but Michael Ilkovic was, was personally, was, and I saw the best AP goal of his career. There are definitely bright spots after these, not the only ones. I mean, I could probably stand there for four or five minutes and tell you about. We'll see the teachers that are over here, kids are definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Old business, number one, revision of policy forty-two eleven organizational chart. Resolve, resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, accept the revision of board policy forty-two eleven organizational chart. Motion, please?
Yep.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Carried. Moving on to new business. School resource officers agreement, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the school resource officers agreement with the Village of Caledonia for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. Motion, please?
Motion.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Carried. New business number two, certification of evaluators and lead evaluators. Whereas education law, section thirty-twelve D and subpart thirty-dash-two of the regulations of the commissioner of education require that administrators receive specific training as a condition of performing teacher and principal evaluations pursuant to that section and subpart, and whereas administrators so trained are eligible to be designated by, as evaluators and lead evaluators, by authorizing the performance of evaluations pursuant to that section and subpart, and whereas certain partnerships, certain partnership administrators have received the required training. Now therefore, be it hereby resolved pursuant to education law of the regulations of the commissioner, that the following partnership administrators are certified as evaluators and lead evaluators. And we have Mr. Robert Malasani, Dr. Rebecca Chanel, Mr. David Bolter, Mrs. Michelle Meyer, and Mr. Tim McArdle. Motion, please?
I'll make it.
In a second?
Yep.
Any further discussion?
Uh, just that Megan Rogers will be trained here shortly, and she will then evaluate her personnel report to her. That'll come next meeting, hopefully.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Number three, resolution to approve audio and video technician rate. Resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approved the hourly rate for the audio and video technician at thirty dollars per hour for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. Motion, please? In a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Number four, resolution to approve the security rate for athletic events. Resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approved the Caledonia Police for Security Athletic Events at an hourly rate of twenty-two dollars. Motion, please?
Yep.
In a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried. New business number five, creation of textbook committee. Resolved that the Board of Education appoint representatives to the textbook committee for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. Do we have to name those?
Yes.
John, you mentioned that you were willing?
Absolutely.
Mr. Bickford? Do we have any others? Okay. So the motion is for the textbook committee to include members John Bickford and Liz Dietrich. Motion for this, please?
I'll make it.
In a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Number six, school bus intermunicipal cooperative agreement. Resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve intermunicipal cooperative agreement with BOSI's General Transportation regarding reciprocal loaning of school buses for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year per attached resolution. Motion, please?
Yep.
In a second? We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried.
Chris, real quick?
Yes.
Bob, did we have this in the past?
Yes, we actually will have three bus intermunicipal agreements with BOSI's. We have two that have been finished, and we're working out the logistics to the third. Yes.
And new business number seven is the second, school bus intermunicipal cooperative agreement. Resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve intermunicipal cooperative agreements with Genesee, Livingston, Tuban, Wyoming counties regarding reciprocal loaning of school buses for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year per attached resolution. Motion, please?
Yep.
In a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Resolved that the Board of Education adjourned to executive session at six forty-eight PM to discuss the employment and employee history of particular persons and matters leading to the appointments. We have a motion, please? Arnie, motion, second by? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. We will be back shortly. All right, welcome back. Next item on the agenda is personnel. I would like to ask for a motion for one through thirteen as set forth in the agenda. Number one, approval of substitutes for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. Number two, annual reappointment of bus drivers. Number three, resignation of teacher. Number four, appointment of mentor. Number five, appointment of middle school, high school cook manager. Number six, approval of substitute bus drivers. Number seven, permanent appointment of bus driver. Number eight, permanent appointment of bus driver. Number nine, appointment of food service helper. Number ten, coaching positions. Number eleven, a resignation. Number twelve, science teacher. Number thirteen, revision of appointment of director of pupil services. Motion, please?
I'll make it.
In a second?
Yep.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. That motion is carried. Can I have a motion for meeting adjournment, please? Okay, motion made and seconded, resolved at the Board of Education adjourn the meeting of August ninth, twenty-twenty-two at-
Eight twenty?
Eight twenty PM. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Have a good night.